Welcome to the February the 6th regular meeting of the county commissioners. At this time, I would call the meeting to order. Again, welcome everyone that's here. And I would ask Commissioner Brandon King for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner King.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time, this time we have together. Thank you for bringing everybody together and please be with us as we do the county business and guide us in the right direction to do your will, sir. And everything we ask and need to say may be continued. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, it is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner King. At this time, everyone should have the agenda in front of them. I would entertain a motion to approve or make any adjustments to that agenda.
I think motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. I did not have anyone sign up for public comment. Are there anyone here that'd like to come up? Alright, here none, we'll move along. Item two, proclamation for National FBLA Collegiate Week, and our presenter is Ms. Chloe Thomas. Ms. Thomas. And would you introduce your sidekick there?
Yes, so with me is Madison Thomas, who is also a member of the Stanley chapter of FBLAC. So, good evening, I'm Chloe Thomas, and I'm working towards an associate in applied science at Stanley Community College. At SEC, I am the vice president of our chapter of Future Business Leaders of America Collegiate. Previous to this year, you knew us by our Greek name Phi Beta Lambda. On behalf of our local chapter, we are pleased to be here this evening for the signing of this proclamation indicating Stanley County's awareness and participation in National FBLA Week. The proclamation lists the goals of our organization at the national, state, and local levels. In addition to preparing students to be successful in careers, FBLA provides the opportunities to build leaders in the areas of business and community life. We appreciate your helping us celebrate this week, and we appreciate your celebration with our school, especially this past year, as we produce national and state winners in state and national competitive events. We also saw a national officer from Stanley Community College installed at the National Leadership Conference last June in Chicago. Toby Neal is our chapter president, and as national parliamentarian, he is in Washington, DC, doing online program for chapters throughout the country, as well as visiting members of Congress to promote FBLA and career and technical education funding. As one of those national first-place winners, I was proud to say I was from Stanley Community College in Stanley County. We are preparing now for our annual state leadership conference that will happen this April in Charlotte, with state winners advancing to national competition this coming summer in Atlanta. With me tonight, or like I said, Madison, who is a student in business administration at Stanley. So, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and joining us in this salute to Stanley Community College and its FBLAC chapter during National Future Business Leaders of America Week.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Would you, do you want to read the proclamation resolution?
You can read it.
You don't have to if you don't want to. Alright. You should have a proclamation in front of you, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the proclamation as it is presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lohan and a second by Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Chloe Madison, I know you make your mom and dad back there very proud. Thank you for being here tonight. Alright, item number two is the NC DOT resolution, and our presenter is Mr. Sean Epperson.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Sean couldn't make it. My name is Theo Gataia, I'm the Division 10 Planning Engineer, that's the local NC DOT area. I have a presentation, if I could share that on the screen. There it is. Alright, like I said, I'm Theo Gataia, the Division 10 Planning Engineer, that's the local division that covers Stanley County. Wanted to present a potential project at the intersection of NC 740 and Blackhawk-Rite Road. Here's a overview of the intersection. It's located to the north of Baden, close to Baden. The current intersection has poor geometry, as you can see, the intersection angles do not line up well, this creates potential hazards. And NC DOT has received concerns about vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed off of 740 and going down to Rite Road. This geometry allows vehicles to do that, just given the way that it's laid out. DOT, we've developed a concept to help mitigate that. As you can see on the screen, the hashed area, that's existing pavement that would be removed. And then, you can see where Blackhawk and Rite Road, they would be teed up with 740 by providing that T-intersection. Vehicles have to slow down to make those maneuvers, as well as it's safer, it helps with sight distance as well. And this is a small project that NC DOT is proposing to fund with high-low funds, those are high-impact and low-cost project funds, $50,000. DOT would fund this whole project, we're not requesting any financial contribution from the county. And a stipulation of those high-low funds is that we receive a resolution of support from the local jurisdiction, which is Stanley County. So, that's what I'm here to ask, and if y'all have any questions, I'll take any.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
The landowners that surround this area, have they been met with?
As far as I'm aware, they have not been met with. When this design was laid out, I asked if there were, did they anticipate any right-of-way being purchased? And we are not anticipating any right-of-way needing to be bought, so all of this could be done within the existing right-of-ways, no property would have to be taken.
Just a comment, and I made this comment the last time. My opinion only, that property owners surrounding these type changes should be talked with before you seek my approval as a commissioner.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. People traveling down Blackhawk Lane to 740, will they be able to turn right on the 740? Because it's got a green area there that says soft pavement.
That, that green area, that's, that's plus or minus, that's a square feet of pavement. So, that green area will become new pavement. It's not, it's not a right-in or left-out only condition, it's a, it looks like soft, but that's a square foot pavement, so that will be new pavement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It looks to me, maybe you can clear this up, but if you're coming out of Blackhawk and turning right on that green area, then the folks coming down 740 and that want to turn into Rite Road, you're gonna have some quick merging in there, correct? If I'm turning right out of Blackhawk, and the folks coming down 740 are wanting to turn right onto Rite Road, you're gonna have a lot of activity going on right there.
I don't think the volumes down 740 would create that many potential conflicts. I mean, it'd just be like anywhere else. This will help the sight distance, because right now, if people are coming down Blackhawk Road, they basically have to get in front of Rite Road, look left, and turn over 90 degrees. I mean, they almost have to do a U-turn to head north. This geometry's the more standard when you tee it up like that.
My next question is, that hatched area?
Yes.
Would that, that right-of-way revert back to those landowners, or that still be a DOT right-of-way there?
We typically wouldn't do that. We would likely keep it. That would just be more administrative cost to the project, just increases it.
Alright. Any more questions for you? Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve this at the last Rocky River Plan meeting, the representative from Baden felt like this would be a good addition for them.
Okay. I have a motion, and second by Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 6-1. Thank you, sir. Alright, item number four is 2022 Delinquent Tax Report, and presenter is my favorite. Clinton's wearing, Clinton, it's about time sending those little postcards out again, isn't it, sir?
Few more months.
I hear you.
Good evening, Chairman Eifert, members of the board. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you the 2022 Delinquent Tax Report. According to GS 105369A, the tax collector must report to the governing board the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2223, tax year 2022, that are liens on real property. And upon receipt of that report, the governing board must order the tax collector to advertise the tax liens. As of January 30th, 2023, the total amount of unpaid county real property taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property amount to $1,840,384.29. Upon order by the Board of Commissioners, these tax liens will be advertised in March 2023. The stated amount will be reduced as my collections office continues to accept payments, and delinquent notices have already been mailed and already in mailboxes, in an effort to collect these taxes. And I've attached the report for your viewing. And I would request that the Board of Commissioners issue an order to advertise these tax liens during the month of March 2023. To give you a little background, this year, we're at $1,840,000. Last year, we were at $1,877,000. So, we're about $37,000 better than we were last year this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, any questions for Ms. Swearingen?
Chairman, I do have one. Delinquent taxes that were not paid by year-end.
Yes.
When you collect those, you get the tax fees, but do you also charge interest? And if so, what percentage?
So, interest on the 2022 bills accrued 2% on January 6th of 2023, the day they become delinquent. So, we mail them out, end of June, 1st of August. Technically, they're due September 1st, but they're not delinquent until January 6th the next year. So, January 6th, 2% interest accrues, and then the 1st of each month after that, 3/4 of a percent every month. And that goes on forever, so.
January 2% for that month?
That is correct. And all that's by statute.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Alright, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we authorize Clinton to proceed with advertisement of past-due taxes. Second.
I have a motion, second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Alright, item number five is appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Board, and our presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Eifert and fellow commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm here to present on behalf of the advisory board. We have four vacancies due to a member moving out of state, deaths, and one being unable to renew a term. So, we are asking respectfully to request the following applicants be considered for appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Board. That is Debbie Bennett, Barbara Ledbetter, James Moss, and Audrey Rigsby.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Sullivan? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to nominate Debbie Bennett.
We gonna do it one at a time, or you?
We usually do it all these.
We can, if you want to do it, we're all at one time.
I nominate all four nominees.
Alright, I have Commissioner Shudo, all four, and Commissioner King, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the Health Department presentation, and presenter is the Health and Human Service Director, Mr. Jenkins. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Eifert and commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Unfortunately, our clinic provider is retiring at the end of March of this year, and that would happen to be Ms. Patty Lewis, she's an atrium contract employee for many years with the Health Department. So, atrium can no longer offer a contract employee. This is due to their provider's earning production incentives based on the number of patients seen. We've had an opportunity to speak with several health departments of similar population densities and provision of clinical services, so with that, and having those conversations and discussions, requesting approval to advertise and hire a full-time advanced practice provider, which is, other words, a family nurse practitioner or a physician assistant. This is a required public health position. Grade would be about an 82, or actually, an 82 with a minimum of $79,072 and a maximum of $126,516.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any questions for Director Jenkins?
Make a motion, we approve the position.
Okay, I have a motion to accept, approve the position.
I have a question, but I'll wait during discussion.
Alright, I have a second. I have a second to Peter's motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Commissioner Crump. Alright, any discussion? Commissioner Lohan.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jenkins, do we have any idea why atriums decided not to renew or try to hire someone?
They weren't able to, with the productivity bonuses that they offer for their employees, it was hard to be, provide, give a provider. Years ago, they used to provide backup, provision of services. We've recently had to provide backup for when their provider, when Patty was out, so the cost, and then with the compensation study, costs kept going up and up. So, my conversations with Mr. Freeman is that it wasn't really an ideal scenario, that they continue to contract, we continue to contract with them. So, our most recent contract was $166,000 is what we're paying atrium right now, and obviously, if we hired somebody, fringe in benefits, we're looking at $110,000 a year. So, from a feasibility standpoint, that was best action to take moving forward.
So, you're saying we'll save money?
We can save money, yes, sir.
What kind of expectations will that person have? I mean, I know the hospital physicians or PAs, they want them to see so many patients per day.
It's an excellent question. We actually have a public health provider number that we try to shoot for, and that's typically 15 to 16 patients a day, because that is the bread and butter for your clinics is your provider. You can build at the highest level with your mid-level or advanced practice provider. So, those will be the expectations, once we get them trained and get them up to speed with our clinics and the services we provide.
Do you have a formal job description you can share with us for this position?
Yes, ma'am, I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, well, I've got one. You're saying that we're paying $110,000 a year now for a provider?
Our current contract is $166,000 with atrium.
You said something about we're only paying $110 of that, is that right?
No, the $110,000 would be the salary and fringe benefits initially, if we hired somebody into that low end of that grade 82.
So, it's still gonna cost us $110?
Yes, sir. And that's a required position. I mean, it's, you gotta have your mid-level provider provide those services.
Is this a full-time job?
Yes, sir, it is.
Which means?
That means they'll be working the clinics from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday.
I guess you attract that as the manager?
Yes, sir. Well, we have nurses.
I understand there's some PAs now, or nurse practitioners that may not work, but 20 hours. What I, I was echoed some information by another commissioner.
That's one of the challenges with recruiting right now, is there's such high demand in the healthcare world, that, you know, being flexible, we do, we are flexible, but typically, our schedule is, nice thing about it, our schedule's 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, you're not doing weekends and evenings. So, that may be very attractive for someone.
You've already got some applicants for the position.
Do not have any official applicants, because it has not been advertised or approved or advertised at this time, but I've had interest, a lot of interest.
From the meeting, I was thinking that you might have sent it.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're excited that, you know, we have, we have interest right now in that position.
Any more questions from the board?
What are the options? We have places to move into contract, I mean, is there outside providers other than atrium?
You could typically go locum tenens, but you're gonna pay an exorbitant amount of money for that. We could do some direct contracting, but then you'd have to offer something like Commissioner Lohan kind of alluded to, where you do like a four-day-a-week. But that would be, with direct contracting, it's still gonna be very expensive. And with us providing employee health, Monday through Friday, wanting to be available for children and families on the county's insurance plan, it's ideal to have a full-time employee Monday through Friday for that availability for those clinics. Again, hopefully, we'll recruit somebody, if not, we may have to go back to looking at contract, working with county manager and HR, but hopefully, we can get somebody in.
Alright, any more questions? Alright, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
You have a question?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo, and a second by Commissioner Crump. Can we do that again? I think, did I miss somebody? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Our next item, I'm gonna butcher this, I'm just gonna say Lucas Device Presentation, by presenter is Dale Chandler. Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually not coming to ask for anything. I'm here for the demonstration. Alrighty, so, I'm here this evening to present on the Stryker Lucas Device that we were able to procure for a majority of our county volunteer fire departments, as well as some of our staff vehicles here in the county, through some grant funding. What is the Lucas Device, first and foremost? The Lucas Device is a mechanical CPR device that allows for automated and continuous chest compressions for cardiac arrest victims. Basically, it's a machine to do what a person typically does, or in a typical EMS situation, what 5, 10, 15, or even sometimes 20 people have to do. So, we had an initiative that kind of started from our field training officers. We saw that there were some limited resources here in Stanley County. We don't have exponential amounts of first responders or EMS providers, for that matter. So, our administrative and training staff set out to find a solution to that gap, to provide the most appropriate care to our citizens here in the county without taxing our resources. We were able to train on some devices. We were actually able to demo a Lucas Device for a period of about three months, I believe. And we had it on a supervisor's vehicle, so it went to every cardiac arrest, was able to be used. And after kind of some reviews from our staff and our training division, we discovered that the Lucas Device was the most user-friendly option that there was. The good thing about this device is it performs consistent compressions, and it doesn't tire like a human being. There are limitations, of course, it's battery-powered, but the good thing about the Lucas Device is each of them does have a power supply, so if the battery does get low, we have two batteries in each Lucas Device. So, if the battery should die, or the machine fail from powers, we can actually take the power supply, plug it into the machine, and run it off electricity in the ambulance, in the house, wherever they may be. So, once it was determined that the Lucas was the most viable option, and the best alternative to traditional CPR response, the admin division of our agency approached the Fire Chiefs Association in the county about some possible options. Of course, we could pursue grant funding for our agency solely. The limitation to that is, we have six ambulances that could be responding from any point in the county to a cardiac arrest, whereas the first responder entities are in their district, and typically, they're the first ones on the scene of a medical emergency. We presented that to the fire chiefs, the masses kind of agreed that the best option was to pursue some funding for each of the fire departments to have the option to buy into the program. We spoke with some representatives from some nonprofit foundations, and had some good offline conversations with how we needed to proceed as far as funding that needed to be added to their grant funding to make it more pleasing to their board of directors. So, basically, the option that we presented to the fire chiefs was, each department that wanted to buy in with the devices had to pay a nominal fee of $3,000 for a $19,000 piece of equipment. It was very attractive to us and to most of the fire chiefs as well, who were present at the meeting, and we proceeded with applying for the grant. At the end of the day, we applied for the Cannon Foundation Grant. They awarded us the amount of $279,072, leaving the remaining cost of $42,000 to be shared across the departments that were interested in participating. After the funding was announced, these following departments on the list chose to participate. Richfield, New London, Millenport, Indy, Ridgecrest, Oakboro, West Stanley, Aquadale, Central Royal Fire Department, and Southside. You know, we have a very good spans right now in the county of departments that have participated, and so far, we have deployed those devices with some promising results. I got two guys coming up here now, we're gonna give a little demonstration on how the device itself works. Keep in mind that it is just like any medical device out there today, it does have its limitations. But, in this situation, of course, you proceed into a cardiac arrest, determine that the patient is in full arrest, you begin chest compressions. The good thing about this device is it can really be deployed with two people, and then it will free up at least one paramedic to do ALS skills. So, you see here, the first provider in starts CPR, the next person in gets the device out and prepares the board. When they get to a pulse point, they lift the manic, or lift the individual, slide the board underneath, and then the next part of actually applying the machine can be done while they're continuing chest compressions. Most devices on the market can't be, can't have this done while they're actually performing the compressions, you have to stop to apply the machine. When they get to the next pulse point, he pulls the piston down, places it on the chest, and he pushes the start button. At this point, it engages, and it does high-quality chest compressions constantly until you push the pause button. We typically have a policy with our cardiac arrest, at every two minutes, we do a pulse check and a rhythm check. They've also secured the head with a neck strap. Fred here doesn't have any arms, but generally, people that are in cardiac arrest do have arms, so on the side of the machine itself has arm straps where we can bring them around and strap their arms into the side of the machine to keep them from flopping around if we have to move the patient. These machines are set up to alert out loud when we get to the two-minute point, and you would not believe how long in this situation two minutes really is. you would not believe how long in this situation two minutes really is. So, it will alert with a three continuous beeps to tell our staff to get ready for a pulse check, two minutes is coming up. They can pause it, check the rhythm on the monitor, check to see if the patient has a pulse, and if it is a rhythm where we have to deliver a shock, they can actually re-engage the machine and deliver the shock while chest compressions are ongoing. You know, the way it is now with traditional humans doing CPR, you have to stop chest compressions unless you want to have a shocking experience. So, this device allows us to cut our off-the-chest time down from ten seconds, sometimes fifteen seconds if it's kind of a little bit of artifact on the monitor, to now, we can be off the chest and back on the chest in less than five seconds. Just a little bit of data on this device. Before Lucas implementation, the three months leading up to that, from August 1st to Halloween, we had nineteen patients that were in cardiac arrest that we treated in this timeframe. In that timeframe, forty-two percent of those patients, we did get return of spontaneous circulation, or ROSC. In that particular timeframe as well, we had thirteen patients that were in what we call a systole or a flat-line arrest. None of those patients were revived with manual CPR. That is the audible alert that I was telling you about earlier. After Lucas implementation, from November 1st until today, we've had twenty-six patients that we treated for cardiac arrest, and our ROSC rates have increased to fifty percent. And in that timeframe, we've had, again, thirteen patients in that systole, and we've had seven that have been revived. Now, of course, not all of those have been discharged from the hospital, but even if they weren't discharged, it did give the opportunity for them to, their family members to at least say goodbye and, you know, have that little bit of closure. Our opinion on this is, it's, if it saves one life, it's been well worth the cost to implement, but so far, we've had an eight percent increase in our cardiac arrest statistics. And we're really looking forward to what, after a full year, what the data will show. But at this point, I just want to come before you and would like to formally thank the Cannon Foundation for their generous funding to help implement this project into our county. Without them, this would not have been possible as soon as it was, or it may have never been possible. But we would like to think that because of this project, eight percent more of Stanley County residents will be around to celebrate the next milestone with their children or grandchildren, things that may be going on with their families, and it may not have been a reality without these devices. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wow, Mr. Chandler, that's exciting. Any questions?
Just a comment. As a citizen, I really appreciate what you all do, and this type device, who knows? Could save my life.
The thing about cardiac arrest is it knows no demographic boundaries, so.
An eight percent increase, is that this year or?
That is actually in the last ninety days.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Very interesting.
Any? It does not, but you would be surprised what you can squeeze in there. It does, for your obese patients, it does require a little bit more of maneuvering. I guarantee you, we can get, I can fit in it, so we can get you in it, because I like beans and taters myself, so it can get put on me. And so, I mean, it does have its limitations, but so does every other device we carry.
I have a question. Did you seek out this opportunity, or did another group seek you out to be, to try this out?
It actually was kind of a parking lot brainchild between myself and Southside's Fire Chief Jeff Graven, and then it just kind of went from there. It was kind of a fast-paced, we really didn't expect it to go as quickly as it did.
And was it because of the increase in the cardiac arrest?
No, it actually was just a sidebar conversation, because Jeff's after any kind of free money he can find. So, we sat around and talked about it for a little bit, and then I actually had a promising conversation with the folks at the Cannon Foundation. They actually came down and met with us and got a little bit more on how our county operates, and they seemed very interested at the time, and they've been very generous to our EMS agency in the past, so.
Dale, how long has this device been available?
That's actually the Lucas III, so it's the third generation. I could not tell you an actual full implementation date, but it's got quite a bit of backside admin capabilities, so it will actually transmit a report once it's done. It tells us how long the machine was on, how long it did CPR, how many compressions it delivered, and it will actually tell us, from a quality assurance standpoint, the longest pause between compressions. So, we used one the other day, and the longest pause we had was five seconds, and I think our shortest pause was about two seconds. So, basically, your, your heart's constantly pumping if, if we get that machine deployed.
Again, what Commissioner Lawhan said, I want to thank you guys for all that you do out there.
Don't thank me, thank the guys in the field. I just push papers, I just push papers around.
I certainly, I certainly appreciate it. Any more questions? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Commissioner Shudo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Board comments, announcements, and committee report. I think I'll start with Commissioner King.
I don't have a whole lot of report from the committee, though. We did have a Fire Association meeting the other night, had a great turnout for that. There was probably sixty members there where they re-elected their board, and the board stayed the same as it was, so I was glad to see all the participation come out from all the volunteer fire departments. Just want to thank the county staff for the retreat they put on the other day for us. They made it fairly simplistic for us new folks, and, you know, a lot to learn, and it really means a lot for them to take so much time and effort to put into that. And, you know, the Stanley Community College students today coming forward, that was a great step. I like to see the community college get involved, and the county needs to be involved with them. I want to say, Clinton, thank you for all you do. I know you've probably got the most thankless job in the county. It ranks right up there with law enforcement and EMS, so nobody's happy when they say you probably. David Jenkins, I thank you for looking for ways to save the county money. I appreciate you thinking outside the box and trying to bring innovative ideas, and that Lucas Device is just tremendous. I'm glad to see us have that, and thank you, guys, for implementing that, and keep digging hard. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Shudo?
Yeah, I'm excited that Debbie's going to be on your board. She brings a lot of excitement to whatever she does, and she's very, she loves Stanley County, so I think you've got a good addition there. And I just want to say, we had that budget retreat the other day, and got three new people on there, so that changes the dynamics, and I want to say I've enjoyed listening to you guys, because you ask, you're not afraid to ask questions, and, you know, we may not always agree, but the ability to ask those questions is important. And just want to say, with the school board, after listening to that presentation, we got a lot of work to do, and, folks, we have to make a lot of tough decisions. When I did ask them the question, I think it was, what plans do you have to ever replace? I think I had mentioned Oakboro and Baden, if they're going to keep them there, they said they just hadn't even had that discussion. It's like, okay, that's been there for a hundred years. At what point are we going to have to make the tough decision if we're going to have it there? I've always said, you have to rebuild it, because you can't go on forever with that. And then finally, just want to give a shout-out to Gene Starnes. I was, had the honor of presenting Gene Starnes with the Stanley County Citizen of the Year Thursday night, the Starnes family. And they go back to the seventeen, the Starnes got here in eighteen ninety-eight, but he married into a family that was here since the seventeen hundreds. So, he's made a big impact on Almarl and Stanley County. That man loved downtown and loved to advertise, and just, just was a very good proponent of business in Almarl. Good job, Gene.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Crump?
All right. This past Thursday, we had a Health and Human Services Board meeting, and basically, the need of that came out today when we talked about the, the new position that they are hiring. And, you know, we just learned about the monthly financials, so, but that was the main part of that meeting. Then, I think it's Wednesday, there is a meeting that I'm going to, Central Atlanta Board of Delegates Annual Meeting. So, this is the big annual meeting where a lot of different municipalities from all around the area will come together, and I'm excited about this board, because, you know, it's, it's going to be good to be able to meet with other leaders from surrounding counties to see how they are handling some of the same problems, a lot of brainstorming and networking. So, that'll be this Wednesday. They meet monthly, and then I would just echo what Peter said about the strategic planning meeting this past Friday. It was, it was very good, and while we don't agree on everything, we did find a lot of areas where we do. We had a couple of members from that COG group to come and help mediate that meeting and help to move us right along. So, we were able to take a lot of our ideas and prioritize them and find those areas where we do meet, and we have the same priorities in mind. So, I'm looking forward to seeing all that come to fruition.
Ma'am? Commissioner Hatley?
Dale, one question. Why didn't the other guys, the other fire departments, show any interest?
I honestly can't answer that question with one hundred percent certainty.
Okay. Sorry I didn't ask it earlier.
No, you're fine.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Lawhan?
Talk about new home permits, starting in January for our new year. Our permits issued were twenty-one, which is a decline of seventy-six percent over the previous January. So, that tells me that our economy is slowing down quite a bit in January. We, that's a decrease of sixty-five homes. The value was three, a little over three million dollars, which is a decrease of nine-point-one-six million previous year. Average permit per home was a hundred and, almost a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Little bit of information about housing. I know on tomorrow evening, we will be going back to the airport, Trent and I, for another Airport Authority meeting, and we'll give a report next meeting of what took place. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Vice Chairman Barbie?
Everybody's touched on everything, but the only thing, one thing, that we had a senior services meeting since the last meeting we've had here, and they elected new officers and got all those in, and I'm really proud of all the stuff they're doing out there. They've got a lot of new stuff and innovative items going on for the elderly people to look at. I thank them for that.
Thanks, sir. Again, I want to thank staff for all their hard work with our strategic planning. If you've never been to Juneberry Ridge, you need to go. That's a hidden gem out there that, it's really a nice facility, and they have cabins and things like that, so Valentine Day is coming up, guys. Our next meeting is February the twentieth. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, y'all.